New at 4:30, more money troubles in South suburban Dalton. New welcome banners recently went up in that village.
But the company that created them says it has not been paid. Regina Waldrop talked to trustees who say this is another example of how taxpayer funds are being mishandled by the mayor.
They're a new addition on a busy Sibley Boulevard. Bright new welcome banners with different messages and a picture of Mayor Tiffany Henyard, her self-titled "Super Mayor" written underneath. We asked some residents to weigh in on the banners.
I think the allocation of funds to go, should go where most needed. The banner would be at the bottom of my list if I ran a town.
It's obviously self-promotion. I think she fashions herself as a, she's imagining herself as some kind of reality show star.
Henyard is accused of misspending and currently the focus of a number of federal probes and lawsuits. Residents continue to speak out at village board meetings, calling for more transparency on how their tax dollars are spent.
The banners cost about $19,000, but the vendor says they have yet to be paid for them and other items totaling more than $85,000.
Mosca Design emailed us a copy of the unpaid bill. It dates back to November 2023. Trustee Tammy Brown says the banners were never approved by the village board.
They don't make any sense at all. They're all of the mayor. It's okay to have a banner that says "Welcome to Dalton", but you don't need to have the mayor's face posted down, posted throughout Sibley Boulevard.
Trustee Jason House in a statement told us, "It's deeply unfortunate that the administration has chosen to squander funds on self-promotion while our fire department has gone without a contract for five years. This blatant disregard is a slap in the face to the hard-working individuals and the creditors burdened by the millions of dollars of debt incurred by the mayor's reckless spending. Our community deserves better." NBC 5 reached out to the Henyard administration for comment, but we didn't hear back.
Not the world knows what she's doing. I'm hopeful that more people will get out of their comfort zone and come and help us with this.
In Dalton, I'm Regina Waldrop, NBC 5 News.
$14 cents. Page two, Chicago Midway Airport, $200. Page three, Cooper's Hawk Winery, $557.68. Page three, Dollar Tree, $145.32. Page three, Food for Less, $107.99. Page six, Irie Jerk Hut, $1,356.22. Page six, Italian Fiesta, $113.59. Page six, JJ Fish and Chicken, $68. Page seven, Johnny T's Bistro and Blues, $90,000, I'm sorry, $90.30. Page seven, Kirk's Barbecue, $676. Page eight, Potbelly Sandwich Shop, $126.57. Page eight, Ruby Soul Food, $674. Page nine, Sophia Tamales and Corn, $2,400 even. And page nine, The Tasty Crab, $458.79. My motion would be that we pay the bills as read, removing the items stated.
All right, is there a second? Second, okay, let's be a motion, second, any discussion? All right, so I have discussions. So, well, the problem I have with you guys coming to board meetings and acting as though y'all don't get things I don't appreciate. I think this year you should tell the truth that you guys don't do your job. And if you need information, you should ask for information that you feel you need. Don't get to a board meeting and put on a show. How you gonna lead trustee House when you don't even know where to start? You're leading them blindly and y'all following him. That's the sad part about it. Prime example, this is a what? Electric warrant list. That means they did what? Already spent. So how dare you get here and showboat for the people out there in the audience? You already know what it is. So why are we sitting here playing this game, wasting time, saying, "I'm gonna take this, have that out, it's already been paid"? Come on now, stop playing. This is 2024. Let's move forward, let's handle the business, stop letting the business handle y'all. But go ahead, for the optics, if y'all want to do that, call and roll, clerk.
Mayor, you asked for discussion there, I tried to speak and you start talking, so can I?
Nah, I didn't start talking, y'all didn't hear you say anything, but if you want to say something, just ask to be recognized again. Are we gonna run this business the way it's supposed to? Let's, let's be respectful, follow Robert rules of order. But go ahead, since you got something to say now.
I do have something to say. It's an electronic warrant list, electronic. Also, you keep, you made it very clear that these have been paid. Last meeting, which I said, and the finance director wasn't here at that time, but I'm so glad she's here now. She stated that we didn't have a credit card anymore because she said the trustees cut it off.
That's true.
Okay, so if we don't have, I requested in an email, could we get the final statement? Because if we haven't received the credit card since May of 2023, and she stated that we cut it off, no documentation has showed that it's been cut off. So what card are they using outside of ACH debit?
Okay, before you start, yeah, I'm gonna give you the flow. Let's clear some things up. You guys did cut it off. You guys, hold on, I'm gonna explain it so you'll know. You guys had control of the bank account that trustee House did illegally, and clerk Key went illegally and hijacked the bank account for an entire year. You know, like I know, anybody that understand money know that you cannot see anybody's information when someone else is on the bank account.
This is not a debit card, this is a credit card, not a debit card.
That's what I'm speaking of, you gonna let me finish?
Go ahead.
That's why I said, we gotta be respectful. You say your stuff, I be quiet, you gotta be quiet when I talk. So what I'm saying to you is that if you guys have done that, which y'all did as trustees, no one up here could see anything that y'all was doing for an entire year. We didn't have access to anything because Jason House was on the bank account, and so was Allison Key. The mayor wasn't on it. So we couldn't call, check up, check in, see what was going on, because you guys was the holders on the account. So that's number one. Number two, I'm gonna let her respond to your question, because you get here at a board meeting and you know how to pick up the phone, call my phone. Hopefully you'll do that this year, since you said you want change and you want us to work together. It had to start by starting trustee Belcher. You can't sit here and say that out your mouth and then don't do it. So we gonna see what happened, because you could have called if you had questions. Instead of coming, put on the same show we just did for an entire year. Y'all should be tired of it.
You just stated, be respectful to people, not, not you, Tangenique, I'm talking to the mayor, be respectful. But Janice Johnson had access to the account. So for mayor, for you to sit there and say only the clerk and Jason House, that's an absolute lie, because she cussed the check. So I'm sure she wasn't cutting the check blindly. Also, we have stuff on this list from June. She makes the decisions what checks go out, what y'all tell her to hold and not hold. So that means she had access, because we had emails from the bank that showed the people that had access and control. Because at some point, you guys stopped letting the clerk and Jason House even see what was in the account, and they had to send the information via email. So don't get up here and say nobody had access to the account, because Janice Johnson, and I'm sure the finance director, Tangenique, had access, there was no credit card at all. When the American Express card originally had $3,000 here, $3,000 there, that we were seeing until we removed, from my viewpoint, now it's $37,000, $50,000, $28,000. So that means that all of the transactions that was on the Fifth Third Account have now been used through the American Express card. I don't care if it's Fifth Third, American Express, US Bank, we're entitled to it. So please just give us access to either accounts payable, again, on my viewpoint, or the credit cards, so we don't have to sit here. We can see what you spent it on and move forward. I see something on here that trustee House took off, which I would have been like, oh, I think I know what that is from the way that it's line item. But I'm not gonna sit here and fight a battle that I don't have a receipt for.
The Janice cut had to be signed by those two people who had administrative access. Janice could not issue a check without those signatures first.
Preach. Trustee House or clerk Key, did either one of y'all cut off the credit card? Okay, thank you. Please forward the email to the board of trustees. I've been waiting on a whole lot of stuff. Okay, so.
I have a comment, mayor. When we're talking about access to the bank and the information, myself and clerk Key, checks were printed by the finance department. Checks were presented to myself and the clerk. We would sign the checks, assuming they were approved on the warrant list. Once the checks were signed, they were handed immediately back to the finance department. Now, what happened with the checks beyond that point was beyond clerk Key and myself's knowledge. Some checks were released, from my understanding, some checks were not released. But that's past the point of our role in that process. Secondly, when we're talking about the credit card, I made no request to cancel a credit card. I would have liked to, I'll be honest with y'all, I would like to, but I made no changes. That, the, everything was scrutinized through the court. If there was something improperly done, the court would say so. So there was no changes. And then additionally, when we're talking about credit card charges, in order to make a charge on the credit card, you have to have the credit card in your hand. So every item that we're talking about being charged had nothing to do with myself, had nothing to do with clerk Key. It had to do with the cardholder and the person that had the card in their hand. I didn't go, I didn't take any trips, I didn't fly anywhere. I didn't do anything that benefited Jason House or anybody else improper. Every charge we're talking about was done by the cardholder. And so whoever authorized that, that's their responsibility. As trustee Belcher mentioned, all we're really asking for is the documentation and the proof. Personally, I would say ask that it be put on the website, so that way it's transparent, because we spent a lot of time in this meeting saying, "I sent that, I didn't send it. At this point, please, anything you send to me, put it on the website, I'll get it for myself." Thank you.
So you keep saying allege, that's not a true statement. Allegedly use it the right way. Because when they give you the check, it's the items you voted on, trustee House. And for the record, it's many a times this body, this board, have voted for you guys to sign checks, and you refuse to sign the checks at all. So when you state facts, state the truth, state facts that make sense. You're making up things that sound good for you, or what you feel that you want doing, or whatever with a credit card, stop. It's all like a spin cycle up here, that's all y'all do. Y'all get up here, we put on a show for the outside world. But yet, if you guys want any information, I'm gonna say this and I'm gonna say it again, all y'all have to do is ask. All you gotta do is call me. I tell all y'all that, don't none of y'all call me, because y'all too busy fighting, y'all too busy doing a smear campaign. And all you gotta do is call if y'all wanting any type of information, any. But no one calls my phone. We get to a board meeting and we sit here for hours, going back and forth over, you said this, we doing this, this what's going on. This person got the card, like, come on, stop, it's kiddie stuff. It's like I'm over it, like, stop. I just wish y'all just focused on the truth, that's all I want. So we gonna move forward, because we'll be here all night, we on an electric warrant, we still got.
May I be recognized?
Okay, one second. We still got AP warrant list and three other items, so go ahead.
Mayor, the, we, in the spirit of working together, because it is 2024, and we all just sat up here and stated that our whole goal is to work together for the betterment of the community. When you sit here and you say, can you hear me? When you sit here and you say we don't want to go back and forth, we do not want to go back and forth. But then you all say out of your mouths, "We have credit card statements that we don't have." They're missing, they're clearly missing if we do not have them, if they were not emailed to us, if they were not sent to us. And as we all know, my viewpoint access, our access has been denied, restricted, should I say. So yes, we can access it, but we cannot look up receipts. I remember as a trustee, you said in that very seat, and you stated to the mayor at the time, that you would not blindly vote on deals or options that you've met, on things that were purchased, that you cannot present receipts or evidence for. You stated that out of your mouth as a trustee. So it baffles me that we sit up here, and now that you the mayor, when the very trustees are asking for this information, you're stating in that term, "Oh, well, we've sent it to you," knowing that you all didn't. We're not asking for anything that you didn't ask for as a trustee. Let's first make that clear. We're also missing financial statements. We haven't received financial statements in months. How is it that as a board, we're over the finances? That's the trustee's job. We keep hearing, "Oh, well, no one's doing their job, no one's doing their job." This is our job. We sit here, and then we have invoices, we have emails every day. Dear, dear Village of Dalton, let's start here. Dear Villages of Dalton, I have a payment for work that I've done. I'm gonna take out the invoice number for their privacy. Where Village of Dalton purchased, they purchased lights. We, the board approved the lights in June, here it is, we're in January of the, the following year, they haven't received. If you don't want to email us the receipts or provide us with the receipts, make it easy. Provide us backward access with my viewpoint, so that we're not back and forth. But I just want to state for the record, that it's unfair that as the mayor, you don't see fit for us to receive this information. But as trustee, this is the very thing that you were fighting for, transparency. Thank you, mayor.
For the record, trustee, you guys get everything that we have. We send an email, you get the financial reports, you get everything, and I've shown that in videos. Now you want me to go do some more work and show you again that you get what we tell you you should have. Now, as relates to transparency, we have been nothing but transparent here at the Village of Dalton. You guys can do spin cycles, scare tactics, tell people that we not when we are. At the end of the day, I keep stating this, if it's something that you don't feel comfortable with when you come to this meeting, you have literally 48 hours to make sure you reach out, ask questions, bring up an invoice, talk about a receipt, whatever it is. But y'all all choose not to, because this is your only time to get on a platform and talk or say whatever you want to say. Until y'all do y'all job, y'all can stop with the mess, miss me with all that in 2024, because we here to do the business. So with that being said, call the row, clerk Key, let's move on, we got another warrant list, please.
Clerk Key, is this vote for with amendments?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Norwood?
Aye.
Trustee Stan Brown?
No.
Trustee Tammy Brown? Trustee House?
Aye.
Trustee Holmes?
No.
Trustee Belcher?
Aye. Okay, moving on, like, that was pointless, that was just dumb. So now, moving on.
For the bills that are approved on this list, will those checks be released this week?
Every time you guys approve bills, we do release the checks.
And I'm asking that specifically, as trustee Norwood mentioned, and there, I've since, as you asked, I've sent several emails about vendors who have asked for payment for things that were approved. Be more specific, Third Millennium and Associates sent the email on December 1st. They indicated $17,000, which was approved in August. Pure Tech, $32,500, email sent on December 19th, they were approved in August. LED lighting, that's the stop sign, the flash and stop sign, looked really good. $17,999.80, that was emailed to on 12/19, asking for status, that was approved in April. Mako, $20,000, that was emailed on 12, on December 11th. That's for payment of multiple invoices. And D's Construction, $378,620.64. Again, I'll email without a response on December 15th, that was approved in July. That's the reason for my question, is if, just to confirm, I have your word on record, so that's my statement, thank you.
Okay, so why do you guys keep taking things out of the warrant list that the people need? Why would y'all take out the concrete company? Why y'all keep taking stuff out that matters to the residents? Help me understand that, trustee House, why did you take that out?
So, the items that I take out?
No, 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 I'm talking about that one item right there, concrete. Why, why did you take that out? How, how do Public Works keep going? If y'all take out people that supply us with things for water main breaks? Because we had a whole issue when y'all did this same dance show when it was Thanksgiving, and we didn't have any cold patch, we didn't have nothing, because you guys took it out of the warrant list. So how do you provide for the residents when y'all play this game?
Would you like me to respond?
You should respond.
Okay, my statement's been the same for the last four months. We have bills that are piling up that are way past due, cannot afford them. And yet, we continue to go out and get new bills and accumulate new things without following a budget, without a plan, just willy-nilly, "Hey, go over here, you get, you get a plane ticket, you get some restaurant food." So after, at the end of the day, we have to pay all of our back stuff. Public Works again, has Public Works been paid yet for their back pay for four years? Now we're past due, that's a lawsuit that they can file at any given moment. We also have other unions that are four years past due. We have tons of bills way past due, in addition to the bills that I've just read into record, that need to be taken care of. So if those bills get taken care of first, pay your old bills first, then we'll look at the new bills, that's my sense.
Because at the end of the day, we still gotta provide the service for the resident. Regardless of your thought or how you feel about things and how it's ran, our job is still make do with what we have. So right now, if we have to order concrete or need a, like I just said, a water main fix, a whole patch, it's people that call us every day about things like that. But you guys sit here and play this. All we're doing is trying to clean up what has been broken for so long. And if you guys would just work with me and stop fighting on every little thing, we will be a whole lot further as a community. There's no unity here. All you guys is create chaos, y'all chaos agents. That's all y'all do, is go and create mess, but with no solution. Name one thing y'all have came up we are done in this community, nothing. Y'all voted last time to pay, well, not y'all, that's when Tammy Brown flipped on y'all, voted to pay everybody, including her friends. But yet, you and the clerk chose not to even sign the checks. Y'all didn't even sign the checks after the board voted to. Y'all just say this how the game go, right? We put it up, they vote for it, and whatever check come up, we supposed to sign them. Y'all didn't sign them at all. So let's talk about how you still got things sitting. Things sit because y'all refuse to sign the checks. So if you refuse to sign the checks, what does that mean? That's my problem. Y'all have to do better, trustee House. You can't want to lead people and can't lead, man, you gotta do better. I keep telling you, just because you wear the suit don't make you suitable, stop, stop. You gotta do better than what you doing right now. And right now, you doing is keeping up confusion, keeping up mess. You gotta grow, man. All right, moving on.
Can I make a statement?
Yep, make your statement.
Four years ago, we were not in this mess, four years ago.
Yes, we were.
Correction, we were not in this mess. We were paying bills, we did not have vendors emailing us on a weekly basis for non-payment. Yes, I did approve to pay my friend, and it is January 2024, and my friend still ain't paid, along with other things.
Because your, your other friends didn't.
Be for real, be 100, people are not being paid. You know, so this is nothing that nobody's doing a grandstand show, the emails are here. If anybody would like to see them, I can print you a copy, and I will block out the other information. So yes, again, we were not in this mess four years ago. We were able to pay our vendors because we followed the budget. That's the reason why you make a budget, and it is to be followed, not to spend and do as you want to do nearly will. Thank you.
Y'all making a fictitious play world of y'all run stuff and y'all don't, stop. I am the executive branch, y'all are the legislative branch, that's it. Know your place, learn your seat, and that's the problem y'all got. Y'all overstep, y'all have to know what to do, and y'all don't. That's why y'all keep losing. Y'all getting schooled from our attorney, the village attorney. Y'all got legislative accounting that y'all pay. Y'all talk about budgets, right? But y'all been paying that man, right? Y'all been putting him on warrant list, right?
Absolutely not, you haven't paid him, so stop telling that story.
Y'all out of order, out of order.
You, you, stop telling those lies.
So y'all been doing that, right? So y'all should stop that. Y'all keep on having this attorney come in, make up these fake lawsuits that y'all keep losing, losing, at the taxpayers' expense. That's what y'all keep doing. Y'all need to stop. But yet, he's on payroll. Did y'all budget for that, is it a line item for that? No.
It is.
No, y'all didn't budget for it at all. And that is the problem. It's good for y'all, but ain't good for us, right? Y'all could do what y'all want, but minute we say, "Hey, hold on, y'all, let's change this, let's fix this, let's do something different." Y'all keep talking about all that happy medium stuff, I told you, that's all fluff. And then we get to this point, and then we gotta fight over bills, pay the bills, pay the vendors. They did the work, it's like y'all want us to have bad credit. Y'all want us to have a bad image to the public, that we don't pay our bills, that's the image y'all got out there. Why? Because y'all get here, people scared to come and do work in our village. We are a village, guys. This ain't no mom and pop store. We supposed to be known for paying our, our bills, our vendors, not sitting here and pointing out who we gonna take out. We don't do that, but y'all do. Call and roll.
Hey clerk, for verification, this is.
We, we done with the discussion, call and roll.
Clerk, is this with amendments, I'm talking to the clerk.
Clerk Key.
This is, is this vote for trustee, thank you. Thanks clerk, I appreciate it.
All right, here we go. Um, also too, y'all know I'm the receipts lady, right? I always got paper, paper trail for all of them. They were saying that they credit card, that they, that we lying, here's the proof right here, an email stating that they canceled the dog on credit card from the bank. Don't worry about it, I'm trying to give it to all y'all, including the public. But my point to y'all is, stop believing the lies, they lie so much up here, it don't make no sense. Like I said, every night I gotta prove my love, every night I gotta show y'all what it is, it's sad. They lie, because they can't beat me, I keep telling you, they trying to run a campaign on lies. Ain't gonna get you nowhere, nowhere. Next on the agenda. Because she sit here and tell these lies to say that we are paying an attorney. She has not paid the attorney, she wants total control, so she think that she's the only person that can have an attorney, and then we have no legal representation, that's for the board. If you look at the budget for anybody that was here during the time when they had a fictitious town hall meeting, which if that's what they call it, it says $455,000 was spent in actuals for legal counsel. $432,000 of that went to Delgado. So when people sit here and they sit there and talk about what they got receipts for, what they don't have receipts for, she has not paid Bert Odison. So as long as Bert Odison, McGrath, or anybody else want to give us free legal advice at this point, pending payment, we're gonna accept it. So you can put it on there, every meeting until one of us is absent, two, three, four of us is absent, but you're not gonna sit here and keep trying to control the situation where your attorney, because he made it perfectly clear, he worked for you, he don't work for us. We didn't hire him as corporate counsel, we hired Delgado firm as the prosecuting counsel. So technically, we don't even have corporate counsel. But for you to sit here and keep lying, saying that we are paying somebody that you know has no check has been cut, you need to stop. It's ridiculous, and you sit here and talk about, "I did this, I did that, they lying, they lying." She sat here and just pulled up a piece of paper, if you got something that said that it canceled it, and I'm sure all of y'all, including you, was on the email, we requested it, why wouldn't you give it to us? But you say we sit here and wait till we get here to ask the question. If she had something, she should have sent it to us, then we wouldn't even have discussion. But for you to sit here and keep sitting, lying, talking about somebody, first, we can go back, pull meetings up, because she good for pulling them up. First she said we paid them $600,000, then we paid them almost a million dollars. But if you look at the actuals, only $455,000 been spent in legal costs, and most of it went to Delgado. So who lying? All right, you finished? All right, go ahead, Tangenique.
Odison was not budgeted for in the budget.
Thank you. Legal counsel did not have no description of who it is. So Odison was, so you were lying too. You gotta be quiet.
You were a liar too. You asked him on what page was Odison budgeted for, I still have.
Legal expenses. Trustee, let her finish. You see how we be quiet and let you do your little rant? Be quiet, let her talk, she got the floor. It's her time, it's her time, you have to be quiet. All right, go ahead, go ahead, Tangenique.
I just wanted to make it clear that was not budgeted for.
Legal expenses. Oh my God, that's your problem, that's your problem. Be quiet.
It was not amended and added, it was not budgeted for, and it is not included this year either.
Legal expenses does not show any specific. Trustee, you cannot overtalk her, let her get her point out like you just did your rant. So you have to be quiet to hear her side, like we was quiet to hear your side. Stop. Point of order, follow Robert rules of order, please. Go ahead, go ahead, Tangenique.
That was not cut, that does not mean the expenses were not incurred, and you're putting the Village of Dalton on the line to pay those expenses.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
So as we go on, and we talk about this, and we go back and forth, as you can see, people are so out of order, so disrespectful. You gotta give respect in order to get it. If we talk and we be quiet, you gotta give us the same courtesy. Ain't nobody interrupt you, whether you was lying or not, we shut up and we listen to your lie. Now you be quiet and let the finance director respond to you, like how we just did with you. As relates to y'all attorney, y'all attorney don't do nothing, so if you saying free help, give that back. Because if it's free, it shouldn't be for you, because he ain't winning no cases for you. So why would you even have a person like that around if they causing the village, the taxpayer, money? You guys just talk and talk about nothing, and ain't producing nothing, and that's my problem. Y'all talk, but ain't putting in no action, ain't no work. At least my work speaks for itself, no matter what y'all want to put up against me, go lie to people, bring media here, who tears down that town? Like, think about that for a minute, y'all, y'all black, black. Look how we fighting, African-American community fighting like this, over what? A title, a seat? I told you, you all our bench warmers, everybody gotta go. At the end of the day, you wait your time, you wait your time. Your turn ain't here yet, we don't run to 2025, and then you let it be what it be. Like I said, then you come and run against me. But all that little fake stuff y'all be trying to do, it ain't working. And it ain't gonna work. As he said, any weapon formed against me ain't gonna prosper. So y'all should stop. Call and roll, clerk Key.
Mayor, I have a comment.
Now you got something else, go ahead.
So, but, just, the, the entire meeting is set up for an argument. Um, information is not given to the board. And then we get in here, it's set up to say, "Yes, I did, um, my ask, I keep asking the same thing, let's put it on the website. We don't have to go back and forth, we don't have to do any of this show. The same item has been put on the agenda for the last nine meetings." I'm exaggerating. But the mayor did say she's gonna keep on putting it up there, knowing that there's not enough support for it. It's set up just for us to come in here and argue. That's the whole intention, come in here and argue, and then state, "I don't want..."
That's the whole intention, come in here and argue, and then state, I don't want to go back in. The meeting is set up for an argument, um, sorry that it's set up that way, and hopefully we'll do different in the next meeting.
Trustee, that's, that's definitely not true, and then, um, you should basically pause on the things you actually say. If it's set up for argument, then why take the bait? Stop it, because it ain't set up for argument. The whole point is to show people that y'all are full of crap. Y'all put things up on here, y'all spend taxpayer money, y'all do all this wasteful spending. But point the finger at the long wolf, the one that's still standing, right? The one that's still standing, y'all point the finger at me, when it's you guys that's really running them up, you four. Trustee House, trustee Belcher, trustee Norwood, and trustee Tammy Brown, who don't read nothing. She listens to what y'all tell her to do and come and vote accordingly. So state facts, and I have all the proof always of everything y'all lie about. But yet, we gotta put on a show, like we always do, to sit here, go back and forth for hours about nothing, when y'all could just do right. All right, call and roll.
Mayor, I know we still in discussion. Yeah, we still in discussion. I know she hit a speech, but I was waiting.
What is that? I can't hear you, I hear, no, you just said.
So I said, I know you were talking, so I was waiting on you, but.
You got something to say, trustee?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, go ahead.
And this is just for the record, and I'll keep it fast, it's a hypocrisy for me, again. As trustee, she said in his very seat, and when she felt the mayor was not, was withholding information that she was entitled to, she did the exact same thing, which is get their own special counsel. So when we have this discussion and it's like, this is some form that just these, these set of trustees decided to do, just for the record, it is not. This is what people have to do when they have a leadership that is not transparent, thank you.
Trustee, you ain't getting the flow no more, you repeat the same thing every time. You need to start repeating the same thing, just for the record, I'm just letting you know, we done with that, move on, call and roll clerk, call and roll.
Mayor, mayor, could I?
You got something?
Oh, overtime, please, before this administration, that did not have security details following them around everywhere, overtime was at $600,000 maximum, maximum every year. This administration is at 1.6 million. How are we gonna get service? We need the mayor to stop spending money irresponsibly. That's where the reductions came, is off of all of the, in, all the expenses that were not necessary until this one came in. And she even said in here, oh man, forget that, I'm gonna double it. That's the reason that we have vendors calling, because we can sit here and put it down there, but the minute that you go out there, tell the vendor you're gonna do it, and then there's not enough money in the bank, which is what we're running into today, because we're receiving lies about money that's coming in, it went from what, 6.8 million, then it was 15 million? Never see it in the bank, don't ever see it in the bank, and the minute.
No one wants to learn, and that's the problem up here. You guys are too prideful to come and just really learn from your super mayor, it's sad. But go ahead, uh, tr, um, attorney, she want to say some things, hopefully y'all listen to her.